Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order. Ms. Glickman, would you please take role?
Commissioner Mills.
Present.
Commissioner McCombs. Commissioner Ryan.
Present.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Juretsky.
Here.
Commissioner Courier.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have just a couple of things on the agenda. Looks like minutes are not available yet. Item number three is public comment. This is a time when members of the audience are welcome to come and speak to the Planning Commission about items that relate to the city of Anacortes but that are not on the agenda. And we would like you to come to the microphone, state your name and your city, and we will give you three minutes if you would like to speak. Just push the button.
My name is Patrick Gallagher. I live in Anacortes, near the ferry terminal. I'd like to speak on the Shoreline Master Plan. Is that part of the agenda or that?
Actually, you're welcome to speak about the Shoreline Master Plan.
Okay. So in regard to the report that I saw that will be discussed tonight, it seemed to be in regard to the performance of the planning, the staff in following up on development effects on the shoreline. But it seems to me that there's much more involved than the development. There's also activity on the shoreline that is not included in development. There's people cutting down trees to get better views. There's people building docks where they shouldn't or temporary docks. And it seems to me that ought to be part of the shoreline plan, too. In addition, the state documents point out that procedural violations can occur in which people do development without getting proper permits or other misdemeanors that are more related to procedure than activity. And I'd like to make sure that that would be included in the master plan. Now, may I ask, do, does the planning department deal with other activities other than development effects on the shoreline?
I can, I can answer that. I'm Libby Graich, Planning Manager for the city of Anacortes. And yes, so any use, activity, or development that occurs within shoreline jurisdiction is subject to the Shoreline Master Program goals, policies, and regulations regardless of whether a permit is required. As far as tree trimming, tree removal, we do have a permit process for that, for those types of actions to ensure that they are consistent with the SMP. And I agree, we do want to, in our monitoring program, make sure that we are, to the maximum extent, practical, including all shoreline activities and developments within our list where we are tracking projects and monitoring the impacts. And we do try to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, maybe people online?
There doesn't appear to be anybody online.
Okay. All right. I think item four is just a placeholder for public hearings. So we will move on to item five, other business. A, Anacortes Shoreline Permit Monitoring Project. Ms. Graich.
I'm just going to do a quick introduction for Alex before he starts talking here. So in 2022, the city received some grant funding from the Washington State Department of Ecology to implement a shoreline permit monitoring project. The overall goal of the project was to understand if shoreline within, or excuse me, development within shoreline areas was being authorized consistent with the Shoreline Master Program, and then whether projects that were authorized were being built consistent with the permits that were issued. This is important information because it helps determine whether the requirement for no net loss of shoreline ecological functions is being met, both on a project-by-project basis and then a citywide basis. The city contracted with Facet to complete the work that was funded by the grant. Facet is formerly known as the Watershed Company, which did do work on our 2010 Shoreline Master Program and also was working on our periodic update to the SMP that is underway. City staff and Facet also coordinated throughout the project with Carolyn Chase, who was the project manager for the grant with the Department of Ecology. And that's my quick summary. So with that, I'll introduce Alex Capron, who is a senior planner with Facet and has been working on this project from the beginning. Alex?
Thank you very much, Libby. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
That's perfect. Let me share my screen. So, without further ado, this is, yeah, going to be a fairly brief presentation. You know, I'll kind of walk through the background, purpose and need for this permit monitoring database that has been established as part of this grant, our overall approach in terms of reviewing past permit authorizations, ASBIL and monitoring reports, and then setting that database up. And then, yeah, there'll be a Q and A there at the end. So, yeah, just a bit of background, just for folks new to the conversation. The Shoreline Master Program regulates shorelines of the state. So these are areas 200 feet landward of the ordinary high watermark. They kind of act as an overlay in addition to the city zoning code. And it also includes all aquatic areas. So that's all marine shorelines and, yeah, all lakes, 20 acres or greater within city limits. So, yeah, as Libby mentioned, there's a comprehensive update in 2010, and then this periodic update is ongoing, yeah, based in part, as it is tied to the city's critical areas ordinance that was updated and now the, yeah, the comprehensive plan effort there as well. Yeah, to look at the need for this permit monitoring database, so it all goes back to when the SMP was comprehensively updated in 2010. And even further back, the city did an inventory and characterization report that took a snapshot of the shoreline conditions as, as they were, and then established that from that point moving forward, there'd be a no net loss of shoreline ecological function. So as development came in, that there would be mitigation that would account for that impact. So that's that, yeah, that no net loss, and then ensuring that permit authorizations would have that in mind, that there'd be mitigation for the impacts. And then for all restoration activities, there'd actually be the opportunity to provide a functional, or a lift in ecological function along the shoreline. And so our approach was to review 35 shoreline permits. So we, you know, the city's issued well over 100, if not much more than that, in terms of overall shoreline permits since 2010. So we took a sampling of 35 shoreline permits. We took a gamut from 2010, but we did focus on those issued in the past five years as well. And then we really honed in on two big aspects. So one, did the applicant provide a mitigation sequencing narrative where they avoid, minimize, mitigate, which is something that SMPs do require for projects that do impact the shoreline setback, because not all projects do impact the shoreline setback, and then if a project is impacting a critical area or its buffer as well. And then, yeah, if, if that's the case, whether a mitigation plan was provided and demonstrated that there's compliance there with the no net loss provisions of the SMP. So this is kind of a, this is an internal snapshot. We took a look at the permits themselves and kind of walked through, you know, we took a look at the description and whether mitigation sequencing was necessary, and then if it, if it was, you know, what was provided, and then, oh, was an ASBIL provided as well. And so we do have a summary of that. I think that's an appendix in our Shoreline Compliance Assessment Report. So the database itself, this was a really cool project for us to kind of dive into this because there aren't a lot of jurisdictions that are currently doing this. I think a really great take home as part of this project is that the city of Anacortes is really getting ahead of the game in terms of, this is not a requirement by ecology, but it's something that the city is voluntarily doing to better track compliance of the SMP. And so by doing so, we set up a database that would have automatic dropdowns, and this is, again, in coordination with Ecology, because they have their own statewide database monitoring shoreline permits, you know, at a much higher level, so that you'd have a dropdown for development type, for the water body affected, for the shoreline environment designation that the project in, you know, the shoreline use and modification there. So a planner could walk through the process and enter this information, hopefully as speedily as possible, you know. So as we were inputting this information, this kind of got through to that. And then the really informative part of this, which is really crucial for projects across the state, is when you have a shoreline permit authorization, then you have a construction permit, then you have that completion date, when is that ASBIL coming in, and then when is that recommended monitoring period coming in. Coincidentally, a lot of the ASBIL and monitoring projects that came in that Libby, that the city, sorry, provided us were not ones we reviewed. However, we did review one from the Port of Anacortes. They provided an ASBIL. They provided a year-one monitoring report. So they were, you know, in compliance and showing that they were, you know, meeting, meeting that criteria. And so coincidentally, if, you know, and I added some placeholders just to show a proof of concept, that if you enter an ASBIL submitted date, that kind of triggers the timing for when, you know, the recommended monitoring report, or the, the monitoring report is due, you know, typically a year after the ASBIL. So if that applicant doesn't submit the ASBIL, then the year-one monitoring report, it's really unclear when that timing starts. So it can start to snowball in terms of compliance. So this is where the tracking, you know, kind of where the axe meets the wood in terms of when is that construction complete, when is that, you know, either certificate of occupancy or, you know, building permit final started. So then you've got the ASBIL for the mitigation, if there is any that's tied to. And, yeah, a key that's also highlighted here for this monitoring aspect to the database is that this is only showing projects where mitigation is required. So it's tied to the first sheet of the database. So it's, in a sense, it's kind of a, an active tool that as projects do trigger mitigation, then they would fall into this compliance bucket of having to supply an ASBIL, having to supply that year one. And so other aspects to this database that are kind of unique to this, to this project is there is functionality within the Microsoft Office Suite to actually set up a reminder that can be automatically sent to planning staff based on these calendar dates that are entered. This is a Microsoft Power Automate function that, that, that the city could enable there that would basically set a reminder for city staff that, oh, great, so construction's complete, ASBIL's due within a year of that construction for the mitigation plan, which often is tied to the seasonality of installing a mitigation plan in general. So, yeah, there's, there are a lot of layers to this and a lot of complexity. So when, when a shoreline permit authorization is approved, that isn't the end of, end of the project, but it can be, you know, extremely difficult to track without a product such as this. So hopefully this is, yeah, well-used moving forward. So with that, you know, this, we got a lot of food for thought in terms of how the SMP is set up, in terms of how permit processes run at the city level. So one thing we really honed in on in our compliance assessment was, oh, you know, the city doesn't have a clear definition for no net loss in the SMP, and that Ecology as of May of 2023 has really nice guidance in how jurisdictions can track and observe that no net loss is being met. And that, again, ties back to the mitigation sequence, sequencing argument, that you have to avoid first, then minimize your impact, then mitigate, but you have to demonstrate that you're walking through each one of those steps sequentially. So you're first avoiding the impact to the greatest extent practical, then minimizing the impact, then, you know, mitigating. And there are other aspects where you're rectifying, you know, a, you know, a substandard, shoreline setback, if there's no vegetation observed on that shoreline setback, you know, to what degree are you rectifying that condition? That's, yeah, that's, that's, kind of leads me to the next bullet. If, if the city is interested in establishing a, what consists of a conforming condition related to shoreline vegetation conservation standards and then a non-conforming definition, this is something that we've, we've observed in other jurisdictions where if a development comes in and you have a plot of land that is devoid of vegetation, you know, to what extent is that applicant having to re-vegetate that condition? You know, right now, the code currently says, well, you have to provide 50% of the shoreline has to be vegetated within 10 feet of the ordinary high watermark. There are other jurisdictions that say the entire shoreline setback has to be re-vegetated for new development. Yeah, so there's, there's other aspects where that code could potentially be strengthened. And so that's, that's an aspect, too, that we kind of honed in on. Another item is, you know, clarifying when a critical areas report is or is not required. And this oftentimes can be in coordination with Department of Fish and Wildlife because they, they manage the mapping of priority habitat species, which may or may not be present or have a primary association in a water body, particularly marine shoreline. So that can help clarify that, well, you don't have to prepare a critical areas report in all circumstances, but in some, if you're in proximity, then that's required. So just kind of that, that clarity there. And these are, you know, very nuanced kind of scenarios that come into play. And then I guess, yeah, finally, to take it home in, in terms of if you have a project where there's, there is a large impact, or a large impact considering performance bonds or maintenance bonds tied to mitigation, that way, the applicant is, has a very strong incentive to submit that ASBIL and to submit those five years of monitoring reports as required by code in order for that bond to be released. So that's, you know, there, there's, again, some flexibility to that, but that's a standard to consider as well. So with that, I, I open it up. Back to the group for questions, and happy to talk more about the database. But I do, this is a really neat project, is need to kind of take a step back and look at how the SMP exists today and how that can be improved in the immediate term, and then how that ties into this, yeah, this powerful spreadsheet endeavor.
Well, thank you very much. And so now I'm opening it up for commissioners. What questions do you have?
I guess since Libby did come up to the microphone, so how, how will you use this or, you know, the recommendations that were made, or will those all be incorporated, or what's the plan forward from you?
Yeah. So at a staff level, we're super excited because there are quite a few recommendations that we can implement right away. You know, we can update our submittal checklist based on the recommendations that we, that we got. We can update our permit software to add in the recommended fields for applicants to fill in some of the key data that we need to track. And, and there are several other recommendations that we feel like we can implement right away. Some are a little bit, you know, more long-term goals, but we do have a plan moving forward for how we're going to eventually get to where we want to be.
Mr. Mills.
Chairman Martin, thank you. You could tell because I banged on the microphone. Sorry about that.
Yeah, well, I see the microphone is on, so.
Libby, curious, Alex kind of spoke to it. The 35 that were looked at are a sample. He said there was over 100. Are we talking 300, 500? How big of an administrative issue is this? And that, that in fact is my follow-up question. As a practical matter, the administration, the monitoring, the policing, the enforcement, it's, it's not just one and done, it's ongoing. Practically, how do y'all deal with that?
It's, it's significant. And I think that we will now have the tools to make that job a little bit easier. It's, it's difficult with having a project that, like you said, you know, it's not one and done. You, you have to keep monitoring and keep checking in on it. And when, when there's a lot of staff turnover and, you know, new people coming in, it, it just makes it very difficult to, to, to make sure that you're following up on each and every one of these permits that needs the monitoring. And I did think that somebody might ask me the question about total numbers, and it, it looks like approximately 52 shoreline substantial development permits have been issued by the city over the last, well, since 2010, when the new SMP was adopted, and 192 shoreline exemption permits were also issued. So quite a few.
Mr. Ryan.
When these individuals, so this is, are these individuals that are like contractors or homeowners that are working on the shoreline areas?
Sorry, I can't hear you. Thank you.
Apologize. Are these contractors or homeowners that are, are the applicants on this?
It, it varies who the applicant is. Ultimately, it's the property owner who's responsible for ensuring that any, you know, mitigation is completed and then monitored over the five-year period.
And, and what's our protocol for following up on people who are self-reporting?
Sorry, for people that are?
For, it looks like with all the paperwork, are we sending individuals from the city to verify the information?
Are we sent, I'm sorry, and I have a hard time hearing over here.
So anyways, on, on the monitoring side of it, once they've submitted the paperwork and they're supposed to complete and parts of their project, are we sending an individual from the planning department or building department out to verify the information that they've submitted and that is accurate?
When resources allow, we would do that. We are, with this new tool, with the monitoring database, we will have an easier time of keeping track of when things are actually due. So when something pops up as saying, hey, a year-one monitoring report is due, you know, that'll be automatic, that, we will see that automatically and then, you know, follow up with the owner to say, hey, you have a report that's due.
Thank you.
But it's not, our system right now is, is definitely not, not perfect.
Do, do we also have any, I know we're having staffing issues, this might be on, a little bit on the side, but are, what are we doing about, with our staffing issues and adding those extra individuals? Because it seems like we have all these programs that are expanding in our building departments, but it doesn't look like staffing is improving.
I couldn't quite hear the last part of that, but you're asking about what we're doing for the staffing?
For staffing, for helping with additional staff in the building department, because we have additional projects that I see that we've been talking about and that we keep adding on and we keep adding on and keep adding on, but we, I don't see staff adding on and adding on to help with that. And it seems like the individuals that we do exist in, have in the building department, are spread a little thin. And we, like, for example, we can't get some of these inspectors out on the fields to, to verify, or this is with just general construction?
Yeah. I mean, we're doing the best we can with what we have right now. We've conducted interviews for associate planner position, and I'm not sure where the building department is on building and filling the building inspector position, but it's, it's a tough time right now to be needing employees.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Juretsky.
What's the process when someone doesn't self-report, but one of their neighbors notifies the planning department that somebody is not getting permits, is doing work without it, is basically doing work that may not even be legal? What's the process?
Yeah, so that report would be filed with our code enforcement officer, who would investigate the complaint and coordinate with the planning department to determine whether there was a violation occurring. And then the person doing the work and the property owner would be contacted and, you know, told to, either if the work was still happening, stop work, and, you know, what, what's needed, what they need to do to come into compliance. So getting a permit, submitting any reports that are needed, and going through the appropriate process.
Does the city have any, anything they can apply, any teeth to that if somebody isn't sorry that they've been breaking the rules and continues?
Yes, the, there are fines and penalties that the city can assess, and then additionally, the Department of Ecology can also assist the city in, in code enforcement issues.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Graich, I would like to say, I was really pleased to see that the city was willing. Not a lot of places are willing to say, you know, we could do better, and we would like to see, you know, some suggestions on how to do better. So I would say I'm really pleased to see that. I do have a couple of questions. I wondered who DCG Watershed is, because it looks like there's two reports and they look almost the same, but not quite the same. So can you enlighten me about that?
Sure. So that Facet is the same as DCG Watershed and the Watershed Company. So they've gone through a, a transition, and I don't know if Alex has anything he want to add to that.
Yes, so we merged with a civil and structural engineering firm that actually has offices in Freeland and Mount Vernon and Seattle, and, yeah, I mean, across the state, but they're similarly sized as a, as a company.
So, so were these two organizations, I noticed that?
Oh, sorry, so we had a reef.
The numbers are quite a little bit different in the number of samples that you took, and, but the recommendations are mostly the same, but not totally the same?
So I, I have been project manager since day one, and that hasn't changed. So, yeah, sorry that the, the reap, the, the name change has caused confusion. That's, that could have been conveyed a little more clearly. sorry that the name change has caused confusion. That's, that could have been conveyed a little more clearly.
Well, the recommendations from Fosset and the recommendations from DCG Watershed are not quite the same either. So that's, I was just confused.
Right, yeah. When we did our initial comply, our initial review of the permits, that was at a date and time when we looked at the projects in their summation in February, and then we provided a compliance assessment report that, that would be the set of recommendations moving forward.
Okay, so taxpayers are not paying for two different organizations to do the same work? That's bottom line for me.
No, they're not.
Okay. Oh.
I see that Carolyn Chase with the Department of Ecology would like to speak.
Sure.
Hi, Carolyn.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can see me, but I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. So at Ecology, I was the project manager for this project, and I was happy to hear the presentation today, and I was even happier to see the report that came out of this. I just want to say how thrilled we were with Libby's leadership to apply for this grant and to do something that's not required, but something that the city wanted to do because they are really invested in doing good shoreline management in Anacortes. And I also want to commend Alex for being so responsive and for delivering such a great product. It is by far the best regulatory monitoring and adaptive management product that I've seen across my desk. And this is a very new thing. I've managed all the projects statewide that have been in this category, and this is the best. There are recommendations that are actionable, and there are some that are going to need to be looked at further in the future, but that's natural, and that's an intended outcome. And I'm just, I'm thrilled with the work of these two, and am really happy to have this as an example to show other communities. Thank you.
Thank you. That's high praise. Very good. I do have one other little question in the back of my mind as I think about the shoreline. And I'm thinking about the MJB project. Do you have any insight into how this report and/or the shoreline master program will impact the MJB project?
I don't know that I'm comfortable answering that, just because they do have a complete application in for a subdivision, and I am not the project planner on that, so I don't, I don't think I'm comfortable answering that.
Okay. Is that, will that come to the planning commission at any point, or no, since it's already approved?
The subdivision application?
Yeah.
Yes, it will. It's not approved yet. It's still in review.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Capron and Ms. Chase, for your high praise. We appreciate that. We know that we have a great team here, for sure.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay. Moving on.
Try that again, Chairman Martin?
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Question for Libby. Do we now have a spreadsheet database that includes all 52 plus 192? Is it just the sample that's on the spreadsheet?
Just the sample that's on the spreadsheet. Adding in all the rest of the permits is on the list of things to do, but that's more a longer-term goal.
Anything else on this topic? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Graje. All right. We are on to item 5B, Planning Commission Procedures. So, gentlemen, we have looked at this, I think this is the third time. The first time, we had a draft from Mr. Coleman, and last time, we had some changes that we agreed to, and we said that we would come back. And the main thing we said we were going to do is look at whether we wanted to have a mission statement, or whether we wanted to have roles of the planning commission. Then, since that time, we've also received from Mr. Mills a few more suggestions. So those are in your packet in red. Hopefully, you've got them in red. And I know I'm fine with all of those changes, and I don't know if anybody has any questions, or hopefully, I've got them all right. Mr. Mills, I think I've got them all in there. Do they look okay to you, or no? Okay, I'm seeing head nods that all of those changes are fine. So then the question is about, do we want to have in our rules a mission statement, or do we want to have roles of the planning commission? The mission statement is still listed there. It's in the cross-out version, but it's still listed there. And the roles, I will say, the roles came from three different documents. One is from the Institute for Local Government, the planning commissioner's role. The other was from a presentation that Mr. Coleman gave us on January 10th about the planning commission's role. And the third, pretty much snagged word for word, came from the city of Covington here in Washington. They have a whole handbook for the planning commission. So that's where the roles versus the mission comes from. I think I could live with either one, so up to you. Mr. Stoneman.
I'd just say, having read the roles that you put together, I like them. I'd like to, I think I would lean towards sticking with the roles that you have outlined there.
Okay.
If we're referring to 1.2?
Yes.
I like the rewrite as in the draft.
Okay.
Which I think is what you were saying too, yeah.
More head nods. Oh, Mr. Carrer.
I'm good with it as well.
Okay. So in our procedures that we haven't actually adopted, it says that we need everybody here in order to adopt them. So I would suggest that we come back at the next meeting with a clean copy with all of the cross-outs and the, you know, additions. We'll just have a clean copy, do a quick review of that, and then have a motion to adopt, if that's meets with your expectations. Dretzky?
I guess it's a procedural question. This says, if we enact it, that everybody here has to be here.
Yes.
What's the current rule which we're living with?
There isn't one.
Oh, okay. So we don't necessarily all have to be here?
It's true.
So I guess my question, my question is more in line than, the next meeting, we have a clean copy. Since we don't have that rule, almost everybody's here, and we definitely have a quorum, and we vote unanimously to accept the revised clean copy. At that point going forward, any changes would require everybody's attendance?
I'll ask Ms. Graje, but I think technically that is correct.
I think so too, but I see that Director Coleman has his hand raised, and I wonder if he wanted to chime in?
Good evening. So sorry, I'm attending remotely. I can check with the legal department to make sure whether or not everybody needs to be there and see if there's older rules that are still technically lingering before we supersede anything. But I think it's a reasonable ask in case every planning commission member is not there next week, or at the next planning commission meeting. So if, for staffs, to help staff, could you be, just state clearly, what are the exact changes that you want to see, like, which of the, you've got the copy that you have now, and there was discussion about deleting certain parts and accepting other parts. If we could just be clear about that, so we can make sure that we get you the correct clean copy for our next planning commission meeting?
So are you, are you asking for us to go through each change?
Only the one, so there's lots of changes shown there. If there's anything that's different from what you just kind of all nodded in agreement about, is that any, is that at all different than what the, what this draft looks like?
I think what we're agreeing to, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to take the draft as it is right now, and we're going to clean it up, meaning we're going to take away the cross-outs, and we don't have to have the underlines. We're just going to clean it up, but we're not changing anything from this draft.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Chairman Martin, I believe if this is in Word, all you have to do is accept all changes.
Yes.
And then there's one place where there was an annotated question that needs to be deleted.
Yes.
So it's two key punches.
Yes, it's quick and easy. Okay. Yay. I think we might have something here. All right.
Chairman Martin, I do have a semi-philosophical comment, not a suggestion of change, but it brings to mind in here that stating that our terms are six years.
Yes.
My personal opinion is that our city council should consider the length of those terms. I'm 73 years old. Committing to six years was a little questionable. I think it may scare some potential applicants away. A three- or four-year term, I think, would encourage more interest in serving on the commission than a six-year term. Now, we can always resign.
That's true.
It's not, but it's not a sentence. I mean, you can, if there are health reasons or whatever, you can always resign.
Okay, I'm moving on. You have been heard. Item number six, planning department update. Do we have some updates?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
So, the planning, the city council is, spoke, some of you were at the city council meeting or watched the city council on Monday, and they discussed and decided to have a July 15th work session, which will, in effect, supersede the city council, the regular city council meeting. So on July 15th, they're holding a work session that'll actually start at 5:00, not 6:00. On that agenda will be two items. One is to pay bills for the week, and the other is to talk about the 2025 comp plan and docketing process. So the planning commission is invited to that meeting, and we certainly hope you can attend. It's, it's not going to be a joint meeting, per se. The city council will sit at their dais as they typically do at a, at a city council meeting, but there'll be, the planning, we're going to reserve the front row for the planning commission members, and we'll see how the city council wants to interact with the planning commission, if, you know, if there's questions or whatnot. It's, we haven't really got to those details. I think they're, you know, possibility for the chair to represent, or something to that effect. But the purpose of the meeting is for them to get their first review of the docket items that have been applied for. So the docket items are requests from individuals or entities that are requesting zoning map changes, changes to the development regulations, or specific code, or specific changes to the comprehensive plan. So for example, if somebody wanted to see one sentence or a paragraph modified, or rewritten, or deleted, or something to that effect, and they have specific requests that they want to make sure it gets in front of the planning commission for review, that that's the, the application process to make changes. So this is something that we do annually, and so we'll be presenting those items to the city council and the planning commission. The, also, Makers, our consultant for the comp plan, will be there to listen and answer questions if requested. And so it's just a really good opportunity for Makers, the planning commission, and the city council, of course, to understand what the city council's goals for the 2025 comp plan are. They're not there to, so it's really, you know, they've spoken at past meetings, you've probably heard the discussion on the public participation plan, how they, how the council would like to make sure that the planning commission is, understands where the commission, where the county, where the, I'm sorry, where the city council members are interested in going with it. And that way, you know, they don't want the planning commission to work on some project and go a long way, and then it turned out that, in a way, that the council is not going to be able to approve. So they just want to make sure that it's kind of taking their temperature, so you understand, not taking specific direction, but understanding their goals for this process, to make sure that through the process, the product doesn't get too far afield from where they want to go. And that's also why Makers is going to be there to make sure that they understand the council's overall intent. So that's, again, going to be July 15th at 5:00 p.m., and we certainly hope the planning commissioners can be there. And then they'll have, they're not going to be making any decisions that day. It's a work session. The, they will hold a public hearing the following Monday. That's the plan right now, so I believe that's the 22nd at a regular city council meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Coleman. And correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the deadline for that docketing process is the end of the month, the 30th?
Correct. And that's not to say that people can't submit comments or anything like that about the 2025 comp plan process. This is for people who are interested in making specific requests to changes, to the comp plan development regulations, or the zoning map.
Perfect. Anything else for the update?
Still, I think that, I think last time we reported that there was, the planning commission had made a recommendation on the ports shoreline permit, and that went to the city council under appeal. The city council made their decision, and then the appellant has appealed that further, so now it's kind of caught up in the state process. And we'll know more about that if you're interested down the road.
And then anything regarding Planacortes?
Well, you know, the big, those, the July 15th and July 22nd meetings are the big next things coming for that. So that's, that is the Planacortes update. I don't know if Libby has anything other that she'd like to talk about. I guess Libby was at an event this- I guess Libby was at an event this Saturday and spent her day out at a booth speaking with people.
Yeah, I guess I'll add to that, yes. So I was out on Saturday and then I will also be at, I'll be downtown between El Henete and the post office on Saturday for the whale of a sail event that the downtown, shoot, I can't remember the name.
Downtown Business Alliance?
Yeah, yes, that they're organizing. So I'll be just signing people up for the comprehensive plan email distribution list, handing out brochures, answering questions about the process, just chatting with people. So come find me.
So I looked for you on Saturday, maybe I got it wrong, were you in Coslin Park or were you at between 5th and 6th?
I was at Coslin Park on the M Avenue side, at the very end.
Okay. I looked for you at El Henete.
Oh, no, that's this weekend, I'll see you on Saturday.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Coleman or Ms. Graje? Mr. Mills?
I'm wondering a little bit about, I think I understand the July 15th meeting, the council is going to review the proposed, the requested changes and comment on them before the planning commission sees them. Is that right, John?
So correct, yes. So the docketing process is the council decides what applications are, they're actually going to entertain. So they have the, you know, they have the ability to say whether or not something is going to be included on the docket, which is the list of things to be updated beyond all of the other things that were required to update.
So if they decide three of the nine or whatever are not going to be entertained on the docket, then we don't have to review them, those three?
Yeah, it, yeah. So we'll see, we'll, I don't know how many actual items there are, but well, they're going to discuss it and then at the, they'll have the public hearing on the 15th, they'll discuss it on the 15th, have a public hearing on the 22nd and then decide on the docket on the 22nd. And also, you know, it's more than just deciding on the docket, while we're talking about the docket, they're also going to use that opportunity to really discuss what they, how they want to see the 2025 comp plan process go. So really filling in all the gaps of where they hope to go with the 2025 comp plan.
Just a follow-up question to that. I know at the meeting on Monday, one of the council members who was not a part of the planning committee requested that they had some lead time in looking at the docket. Would that be something that the planning commission could also have?
So we'll be making it, we'll be just publishing it on the council agenda items, that we're going to try to get it out earlier. So much like with any other city council meeting, you know, all the materials are available typically like the Thursday or Friday ahead, it'll be the same process, but we're going to do it, we're going to try to get that out earlier.
Okay, so the city council members will have the same information as the planning commission and vice versa?
And the public will have all of the same information as well, because that's all on the public website, it's all the same information.
I, I can read some thoughts, but no comment, okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Not seeing any head nods or fingers on the microphone. I am going to adjourn this meeting, thank you very much.